Number two, approval of the minutes from September 17th, special meeting, September 23rd, and then September 26th, special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Chris Sack, these comments I'll reserve for later. Citizens comments.
I would like to comment if we, so it's some comments that we under the meeting was not having anything to do with anything on the agenda.
Okay.
So you're actually not speaking now, Jess?
I know.
Number five, department updates, Beach and Rec, Beach passes. Scott here?
I can go.
I'll go, Jeff.
While we're waiting, why don't we do the proclamation?
Yeah.
Number six, discuss and take action through plan Wednesday, October 16th, 2019, Domestic Violence Awareness Day. We have a proclamation. Please, Laura. Whereas, family is the foundation of a safe and healthy community, it is a goal of this administration for our communities to be safe, and whereas the problem of domestic violence affects all citizens across the whole racial, social, religious, ethnic, geographic, and economic groups, and whereas domestic violence is widespread, including one in three Americans who have witnessed an incident of domestic violence and with an annual cost to U.S. companies of $3.5 billion in lost work time, increased health fare costs, high turnover, and lower productivity, and whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer among women in the United States, and whereas the month of October is Domestic Violence Prevention Month and Breast Cancer Awareness Month, now therefore in recognition of the impact that domestic violence has on the health and well-being of our community, we have voted selected the town of Madison to hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 16th, 2019, as Domestic Violence Awareness Day in the town of Madison. Further, we reaffirm the commitment of the town of Madison to reducing violence in our homes as well as on our streets. We urge all citizens to participate in the activities planned by battered women's programs and community organizations during this month. Citizens should also take this opportunity to schedule their annual breast cancer screening. This month, let us remember the victims of domestic violence and the victims of breast cancer and celebrate the survivors. Done this 15th day of October, 2019, in the town of Madison, Connecticut.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Scott, to you. I'm sorry to interrupt. Anyway, so go back to number five, department updates, Beach and Rec, Beach passes.
Basically, we're still in the fact-finding stage, working with Complus. They are still in their process of the merge, coming passport. So we've had one meeting with one of the lead people, and I have another meeting scheduled next Thursday, to go over what passport's operating system can do to make the changes more seamless and easier for people to acquire passes. And we still have over 138 outstanding tickets to still collect, which letters have gone out.
Yeah, I got one.
Very special. So those letters have gone out, 138 in-state, and there's 86, 68 out-of-state that have been sent out. People are sending responses back in, obviously. And we, I'm trying to work through those appeals as best I can.
Relative to the new system that we looked at, have they ever found any other towns where, you know, where they have a system in place that works really well and we might be able to?
That was one of the questions that we did ask the first, at our first meeting, and you were going to get us a list. Because we may have been pushing our envelope a little bit too much towards them, and trying to make what we have work with their system.
Right.
And I think that made-
Maybe their system wasn't what we wanted to do.
Correct.
I think we've pushed that.
Correct. So there are many towns that are doing the same thing, so she was going to be bringing that information back to us as well. But that's about all I have. Right now, we are working on it. We have a work session tonight where we'll be going over some things, and I know we'll have another one following next week's meeting, probably just after our November regular meeting.
Okay.
And they're bringing that to the selectmen, who will be fine.
Sounds great.
And we're also doing the running lifeguard scenarios.
Oh, good.
Staffing, you know, what that, what those prices would be.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Scott, I know the, I think the reason why we had requested this topic on the agenda was more of a financial summary of kind of where we, did you guys discuss?
Well, as I said, there's, there's still like over 10,000 outstanding in parking tickets.
Is that typical, or is that standard?
No, no. But it's with our new system, so we don't have that much in the system. But numbers-wise, we were a little bit on the low side from last year's season to this year's. Last year, we sold 6100 seasonal passes, this year we sold 46, 96. But I think a lot of that was the late start. We missed Memorial Weekend all the way up to the end of June without any sales. So that might have picked up. People may be thinking twice. I don't know.
What about dollars-wise?
Yeah.
What makes the difference dollars-wise?
Dollars-wise, uh... Let's see, 2018, we took in 176, and this year was 151.
Was the delta, sorry, my math is not good the first thing in the morning.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
So what's the, I mean, years differ from year to year, is that a normal variance? Is that?
It fluctuates quite a bit. I can't say it was that much. We're usually up in the 160 range, and then we have some real good years.
You're comparing fiscal year to fiscal year, or?
Season to season.
Season to season.
Is that collections, or is that, does that?
That's collections.
Okay, so that doesn't include?
That doesn't include the 10,000 that's outstanding, so that would be close to even more.
So we're pursuing, looking at this system, but we're also looking at alternatives as well at this point?
Correct. Just, just variances. We're looking at everything, from going back towards a sticker that's issued, possibly one per household, and then any additional might come in. Whether we can put a scan on the tag.
On your car?
On the car. So it's a physical, and it might, this barcode reader might read it better than the license plate. Those are the topics of the discussion.
I mean, is there a possibility, I know discussions have been had around just leveraging online registration, but that your sticker is mailed to you, and we don't do the, you know, the parking tickets using that technology, is that one of the options being considered?
Open book right now. We want to look at it all, to make sure we're getting the best fit.
I don't want to put, Rob, would you mind, I don't want to put you on the spot at all, but was there any, I'm going to put you on the spot, was there any, just help me understand sort of the general feelings, incentives from Beach and Rec in terms of the commission's standpoint relative to the Beach Pass system and kind of where you guys are in the process?
Well, thanks, I'll just take a minute. So we decided to have two additional meetings, one last month, one is tonight. The last one was really to level set, to get all the feedback from the town and community, just put the facts on the table. This is a working session to actually look at beaches, Beach Pass, lifeguards, hours of operation, all of that. To Scott's point, everything's on the table. The plan is to come to the board of selectmen with option A, B, or C. It could go back to stickers based on every registered car, it could go back to, does Complus or, what's the name of the company now?
Passport.
Passport, sorry. Based on their capabilities, can they make it easier for everyone? So we need to understand that. That meeting is next week. As far as your question, what is the Beach and Rec's position on what happened? I mean, we've heard from the town and community, there is a sentiment to what degree that wants it, you know, someone at the gate, they want that small-town beach feel, they want to be able to get a sticker. And on the flip side, we want to make sure it's easy for everyone, so I'll be anxious to see. The commission likes the idea of online and the ability to make it easy, but we also have heard the community, so I think we also recognize that the rollout, the timing, and the holiday is probably different than the actual system and the process, and we kind of fell into launching at a time where there was a holiday and a delay, so that kind of added a lot of pain. But we're very open to understanding what would be best. So we're going to look at the cost of stickers, the cost to mail it, what would that mean? We're going to look at what would it mean to stay online? We're going to be submitting what the cost would be to fully employ a director and lifeguards, and what the cost would be, you know, to do it, you know, on varying scales of that. Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Anybody else?
Just from my part, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about the year-over-year revenues, and my personal feeling is I would like Beach and Rec to not think about this as a revenue-producing endeavor. The reason for this is not to make money, it doesn't make money, it's, it's really, it's not a material amount of our town budget, and it's, and it's not even a big chunk of the Beach and Rec budget. So I would, I would hope that your, that your plan in the end is not driven by a revenue goal, it's more a user experience.
Yeah, just to answer to that, that's not been the goal, the objective, to turn it into a revenue discussion. I do think it becomes a data point that people want to hold on to, but it's an investment for the community. I think you look at the five-year strat plan, we talk about our beaches and the community and what that's about, and I think that's what's been guiding the discussion, is how do we create a great experience? It wasn't a great experience, and I think that's been the driver of the discussion.
Rob, if I could pick on you for a minute?
Glad I came.
I, the role of our insurance carrier here in helping us understand our various liabilities. I'm trying to understand the connection between their commentary on liability and how it impacts our actual premium that we pay. I, it wasn't clear to me in their message to us, they said something to the effect that if you don't have lifeguards, you have less liability as a town. But what, what I never saw was the connection between if we have less liability, does it somehow impact the premium which KERMA charges us?
I don't think Rob would have that information.
Oh, okay, I didn't know what to pick on you.
Laura might be able to help you with that.
So as far as the beef's liability goes, there is no real monetary value associated with us having or not having lifeguards. What Joey came out from KERMA and stated at that last meeting was that the town has no obligation to hire lifeguards, but if you don't, here's what you need to do to mitigate liability for not having lifeguards, and that's putting up adequate signage and making everyone aware that there are no lifeguards. And if you do employ lifeguards, then we have other benchmarks that we need to meet in order to solve that liability issue of employing lifeguards.
So does that, I want to make sure, does that mean the cost level?
I think so, another way, if you're willing to do it, you do it right.
Yes.
And if you're not going to, so don't do it halfway. You either do it, and you do it right.
Yes.
With adequately trained, adequately staffed.
Yes.
Lifeguards.
Yes.
Or you just don't do it at all.
But if you don't do it, you also have to do it right that way as well.
The signage.
Yes.
To ensure people understand that they, that they're unprotected, if you want.
That their safety is in their own hands.
Right.
Thank you, Laura. Okay.
Excuse me, Tom, we have some guests in the back of the room, and I'm wondering if there's a public education moment that should go along with our proclamation. I'm not sure whether you're prepared to speak.
Thank you very much for reading out our proclamation, we really appreciate it. And just to let you know that the women's club here in Madison is the, we are the ones who actually started this throughout the whole country. So now every other state and every other town who has women's clubs also does this.
Well, that's great.
That's awesome.
You're awarded nationally.
Thank you very, yes.
Our little town, I said, do it okay.
Except with Beach and Rec.
We're going to fix that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For recognizing us.
Okay, number seven, discuss Verizon Connect Fleet Management System implementation. Just going to take us through that.
So this is, this is actually a collaborative between the HR department, the finance department, and risk management, because we all had started looking at the varied aspects of our fleet management system, and how could we best manage it, and what did we need to do to actually implement this, and ended up working for Madison. It originated in the CIP committee, which makes total sense, because you're looking at complete, the complete management of millions of dollars' worth of assets. And right now, we don't really have a replacement schedule. So their charge was for the town to come up with a replacement schedule. And before you can do that, you really need to put in a fleet management service program. So finance department did look at some other vendors, one was each price Fleet Management, which is a leasing program. And while they presented a very intriguing program to the finance department, we're kind of light-years away from that. That would be turning over our entire fleet, all in one fell swoop, and then releasing all new vehicles. So that's an option for down the road. The Dozier system, again, not a bad unit, but it did not have a replacement schedule consultation component that we could use internally. So we moved on to Verizon Connect. They're our current carrier for all of our town cell phones. Their contract was actually on resource wealth bid, so we were able to look at the price, no bid requirement. The overall cost for the implementation did fall within the parameters required for the first selectman to enter into an agreement. We had a discussion about that with all of you. What will it do? It's going to protect ultimately the life of our vehicles, it's going to address complaints and issues regarding our workforce and how our vehicles are driven, and it's going to provide for routine and consistent maintenance and monitoring of town vehicles. Starting now, we'll be putting in 36. I've passed out for you to look at the harness that will be installed in each vehicle. We've also decided to implement a key fob, which I'll go into a little bit sooner, later. The information from the unit is cloud-based, so this is, you know, we're able to go onto the computers, go into Verizon Connect, we have our logins, and each person will have different permissions in terms of what they can and cannot see. So if we set it up for Public Works, for example, the director, the deputy director, and the superintendent will be able to see all of the Public Works vehicles, start to finish, including their GPS trackers. The building and grounds will have the same permissions for all of their vehicles. The mechanics will have the permission for all the maintenance schedules for, and service schedules for all town vehicles, but no GPS access. So you can tailor the approvals, the accesses, as you see fit for your community. And again, what's nice about this is that, you just don't have to move, is that we can set alerts on all of our programs. So example, if a car has a warranty recall issue, we will automatically get an alert that there's an issue with our vehicle, that vehicle needs to come off of the road, and it, the recall needs to be addressed.
And that's tied into the system through the VIN number?
Correct.
So that the manufacturer will actually notify them, and they'll notify us?
Correct.
We don't have to get involved with that?
No.
Right.
If there is a problem with the vehicle's internal operating procedure, so a check engine light, most, everybody pays attention to check engine lights, but not everybody does. The system will now notify the mechanics that a check engine light has gone on in a vehicle, and what is the diagnostic code. There could be something as simple as an oxygen center, which is not critically important to get the vehicle off the road, but it could mean something a little bit more serious, and the vehicle needs to be removed from the road immediately. The, it will measure the odometer, engine hours, to be able to help the mechanics set the maintenance hours for the vehicle. So there's going to be a recommended schedule of maintenance that is given for each vehicle. That can be modified based upon the wear and tear of a vehicle, where it's located, your weather conditions. So that will be working with the garage to kind of set that individualized program off. Some of our trucks are very different, you're looking at a Mack or an International, it's going to have different maintenance than a four-wheel-drive pickup truck. Again, this does track seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. So example, if something occurs with one of our town vehicles on a Sunday during a snowstorm, and a call comes in or a complaint comes in on Monday, we're able to go back and see the root of that truck, and actually be able to go, say it was, that we hit a car on the side of the road, we can actually go from a satellite view down and see whether or not our truck was near that location at any point in time. This is where the risk management aspect comes into play, because we get many claims that it was one of your trucks. Well, one of our trucks maybe, it could also be DOT, it could also be private contractors. So again, this is a tool that will help us. So the setup and training, right now, we have all of the hardware that we need. I will be contacting the mechanics this week about setting up all of the units into all of the vehicles. I do have one key player who is out of work on a medical leave that needs to be back in before we start with the actual training for the departments, but we can build in, you know, the individual user IDs and get all of that going. Our target date was November 1st, we'll probably push back a little bit until like November 15th, and that's when we will go live. Everything is covered under warranty, with the exception of if you run it over with one of the vehicles, it is not covered and we have to pay for it. The, you can, Laura, these are some of the other municipalities that use Verizon Connect. Again, as you can see, this is in the New Haven, Fairfield County region, most of these are bigger than us, and it works sufficiently for them. So what will it do? It's going to improve, actually, it's going to create fleet management. We don't have a fleet management system now. It's going to implement cost savings when it comes to the maintenance repair and replacement of our municipal vehicles. And one of the arguments that always comes out is you could have a 2004 that needs to be replaced before a 1998. And logically, people are going to say, why? You know, the 1998 is older. We'll be able to show CIP, Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, the maintenance records for each of these vehicles, and why the priority is set to have them replaced. The risk manager will be able to investigate accidents with more details on road conditions, weather, speed, and hard braking. It's going to provide protection for our employees on more serious complaints that come on about their driving habits, and it's also going to help us setting up policies and guidelines and expectations. We've already had our first training session of, this is Verizon Connect, you are being, it's a part of a GPS monitoring system, we have electronic monitoring throughout the town anyways. All employees who utilize a fleet vehicle have already signed off on that. From that point, we're going to move into other types of policies that are designed more to be cost savings, such as a no idling policy, you know, hard braking policies, that all these things contribute to your fuel consumption. And we're not the only municipality that has these, but we can, again, affect some cost savings down the road if we do these implementations. So for right now, the initial implementation will be out of my office, because the system does have a GPS tracking system. We'll set permissions and work with Verizon to get everybody on board and get them into the right access that they need for this program. And, you know, we have, Verizon Connect is there both over the phone, they can come onsite for training. Again, met with the mechanics, they knew exactly what they had to do to install the units, so I don't foresee that we need to pay for installation, you know, they got it. What we did look at, decide to do is we do, we went with a fob. So as you get into each municipal vehicle, there's, and it's up on the front table, there's a blue key ring with a fob on it. You will swipe in, which will say that you are the driver of that vehicle, and you will swipe out when you remove yourself from the vehicle, because not everybody drives the exact same vehicle all day long. This is going to be a learning curve, we know that, we also know that people are going to lose their fobs. So we do have some spares that we purchased as well, too. But again, that's going to give us the exact data on who was operating the vehicle at nine o'clock in the morning on October 15th. And it will also tell us if the vehicle starts moving and nobody swiped in. And then the call can go out to the department heads, or the department head will actually get the alert, and again, hopefully follow up and say, in the beginning, mindfully, why aren't you, why aren't you logging in? So, you know, again, the first few ones are going to be kind of just going over with, don't forget, don't forget. We are going to put an ID tag by all of the starting units on the inside dash, reminding the employees to swipe their fobs, visuals work best. So for right now, the cost of the harness is 35, $65 for the fob. Those costs are being absorbed by each of the departments. There's going to be a monthly charge of $19 a unit, that's going to come out of Employment Services. Annual cost for this current year is the 9,700. Next year, it would drop, because we do not have the one-time fees that we're paying now, the 35 and the 65 for the fobs, to $8,200, which, you know, when you consider that you're talking about millions of dollars' worth of assets, spending $8,200 a year to help manage those assets is nothing. If the system works as we, and there's an escape clause, if we don't like this, we can stop tomorrow. And we don't, there's no fee, there's no deactivation fee, we just tell Verizon it's not working the way we anticipated, we walk away, we're done.
Only some costs are the fobs and whatever we have to buy.
Right, right. We think just the opposite, we do think it's going to be a system of value. And again, talking with Public Works, they were excited to see that this sort of tracking mechanism was going to be available to them, and there is a data field that they're going to be able to put in non-mechanical issues with vehicles, such as rot, you know, dents, things like that. So you'll have a total overall picture then of that fleet vehicle. If it does go well, then come July, we'll be looking to add other fleet vehicles, such as the senior center. We did find out that we can do this with the senior buses and the EMS units, and we need to talk with fire and police. need to talk with fire and police down the road and see if they're interested. So that's the-
So one other benefit is that we get points with sustainable planning.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, you're absolutely right. Alright, so that is the fleet management system that hopefully will be up and activated within the next few weeks.
So you sort of alluded to it, that people, the maintenance guys are pretty happy about it so far.
Yeah.
Was there any concern about union impacts or-
No.
You know, sort of big brother watching relative to-
There's always going to be that.
Yeah.
You know, again, we already monitor our employees through electronic monitoring, whether it's their computers, whether you're on camera at your facilities. But anytime you say, we're doing something new, that big brother aspect comes into play. In terms of there being any union issues, there are not. This is management right, we can, you know, manage our vehicles as we feel appropriate. We also can manage our employees as we feel is appropriate. This has the ability to actually help employees as well, too. If a call comes in that, you know, a truck is speeding and they have the license plate number, and we get these, you know, frequently, calls about city employees misusing motor vehicles. We're going to be able to look at the data now and we can go back to the homeowner and say, we investigated it, it is going to be a personnel action, or we investigated it and the vehicle was doing 40 in a 40 mile an hour zone. You know, a lot of times people, they, when they're plowing, that plow sounds a lot, like it's going a lot faster and a lot louder than it actually is. You know, so again, we'll be able to pull the data right up in the office and be able to say, no, the driver was within the speed limits. And we can actually set speed parameters as part of a policy, too.
Do you have any sense of how much time this is going to take from your department to manage?
The first implementation phase is just getting all of the groups loaded. From that, really, it's monitoring because each department, Public Works is going to be monitoring their own, Building and Grounds is going to be monitoring their own, we'll have to look over the fleet aspect of it, you know, between myself and Lauren. So, you know, beyond the initial, I don't see where it's, it's a ton more.
It'll really be more the mechanics.
Right, the mechanics are going to be in it daily.
Right.
You know, I'm not going to be in it daily unless I get an alert.
Mechanics, meaning our mechanics or third parties?
Yes.
It also works with third parties.
Yeah.
So when we take, if we have to take a vehicle to Hammond Asset, they also use the system, they'd be seeing it as well.
Hammond Asset Ford has the ability to actually go into the system and put in the service record.
Do they use it for other-
Yeah, they do.
-organizations?
Yep.
Yeah, I would say that this is probably a best practice of any commercial fleet at this point, and the larger municipalities are doing it. So I think it's great and whatever support you need from our end to get it into any vehicle that we're responsible for maintaining, so I would extend it to-
That is the plan, including, you know, road equipment and then front loaders, stuff like that, you know, we can-
Right.
We can generally put it into everything, but we want to get started this way first and just, you know-
Right.
Be familiar with how it works and see what will make the most sense going forward.
Is the plan to move it eventually towards emergency services as well?
Yes.
I think it, I think it just makes sense. I mean, especially vehicles that have a 20-year lifespan, making sure that we're on top of the maintenance for those is, is real important, I think it will.
Yeah, absolutely.
Have we, have we broached that subject with emergency services?
Not yet, not yet.
Well, they, they're aware of it.
They're aware of it, but we haven't gotten into the depth and the detail because again, we want to start it with the lowest hanging fruit and get it implemented, see what it does, see how it runs, and then be able to give them a full demo and be able to actually see the system on the computers and realize that it's, it's nothing to be, that they should be wary of, that it's a positive.
Is there any interaction that we need to be having with IT, just given this is sort of a system that we're doing?
They're aware of it. Again, this is all cloud-based, so it's, it's identical to the type of website that I go on for Anthem, you know, where I, again, go through, you know, the cloud into the Anthem website, I access all of the data that way. There is nothing that is housed on our servers. We can download monthly reports, but we can also have them stored in the cloud and access them later on down the road through Verizon Connect.
So the guys just have like an app? Is that what they have, like when they're out in the car and they want to look up or add something to their vehicle, do they just-
No, they're not-
-be an app or is it a computer?
The user will not have any capabilities for this system whatsoever. It's management that will have, and fleet maintenance-
So somebody would go tell their manager, I've got a dent in the front corner, you know, can we add that to my vehicle?
And we also expect the mechanics will be doing, and they're supposed to be doing that four-point check before they get in and out of the vehicle each and every time, that, again, those are, the dents, the additional rust and rot, those things are going to be identified at that point.
This seems like a wonderful step forward in terms of fleet management. I have one very narrow question. I understand all the wonderful information that's going to be available to department heads. Is there any check and balance to make sure that the department head has acted on the maintenance schedule or the maintenance requirements that the system is reporting?
Both risk management and HR will have the total overview of all the vehicles. So if an alert is not reset, or if we see that there's a delay in repair, you know, we can then start making the inquiry as to what is happening with that vehicle online.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? So just, would see it back, bring it back to CIP, full circle. So would there just be a yearly just report out, or, you know, CIP is really only working for three, four months of the year, let's say, so would there just be a report out to CIP as to how we're doing vehicle by vehicle? Do we expect to see it in CIP, just given Bruce and I sit on CIP, I'd just be interested to see how that plays out? Or do we not know yet?
Well, I don't, CIP is not, really not my house, but I did speak with Stacy about, you know, what she envisioned for permissions needed for finance. And they would like the permissions that, similar to what the mechanics have. So they're going to be able to pull up all of the service records for all of the fleet vehicles. That's going to then help them as they work with department heads to question why we're not turning the fleet around, why we're selecting certain vehicles over others. And that, again, those service records are going to be the proof that CIP is going to have in front of them as to why we may need to turn 15 vehicles over sooner than what we thought or anticipated. You know, I would imagine, once we get this started, based upon the condition of the fleet, it is going to come in with a higher number in terms of starting to change over some of our trucks because we just have not done that up until the last few years.
About how many trucks do we know will be in the process?
Well, there's, there's 36 total fleet vehicles, I want to say there's 16 variations between pickup trucks and then our larger CDL vehicles. But this also, again, can be used for the graders, for the loaders, again, to the maintenance records on those. Because again, you're looking at 100, 150, $200,000 replacement items.
So we're not starting with those-
Not yet.
-initially?
Not.
What about files? Are we doing files?
Yep, we're doing all, all Public Works vehicles, including plows, same thing with Building and Grounds and all of our fleet cars.
Cool.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Back to you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Number eight, discuss to take actions, approve following resolution. Resolved that the form of amended plan and trust effective October 1st, 2019, presented to this meeting is hereby approved and adopted, presented to this meeting is hereby approved and adopted, and then an authorized representative of the employer is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver to the administrator of the plan one or more counterparts of the plan. Be further resolved that the amendments being made are to include loan participation for vested participants to be taken from funds covered in both the 457 and the 401 accounts, and also to amend eligibility requirements. Section 12B exclusions to include amendments made to the plan through the collective bargaining process or modification of town personnel policies.
So moved.
Exactly.
Discussion?
What the heck does that mean?
Basically, what has been happening is people have a 457 that they're allowed to borrow from, their retirement plan. And when you get vested, you get into a 401, that's a 401. And they haven't been able to borrow from that, even though it's their money at that point, once they're vested, it's their money. So this is just giving them the, giving employees the option, who are vested, the option to be able to borrow from either the 457 or the 401 or both.
Is this standard relative to what other towns are doing or what-
Yeah.
Where did this, where did this, what, where did this come from, I guess?
So we started looking at the plan and this was something that, again, in speaking with Stacy, when the plan was originally put together, it was a very noble position of the town that they didn't, that individual, the selectmen did not want employees taking money out of their retirement fund. I understand that, I appreciate that, so does Stacy, but it is their money. So, you know, what we've done is just opened up the door for access to their funds. Are we going to encourage it? No. But, you know, it's, you can only take the funds out for hardship to begin with and, or purchasing a new home. So it's not like people are taking them-
Add penalty note to that, right?
No penalty, because there's a repayment cycle. So through payroll deduction, it's calculated out how much they've borrowed, they set the length of time for repayment, and then through the payroll deduction, they pay themselves back.
I would assume there was a penalty for taking out early part of age, is that more difficult?
You're not, you're not-
There are standard IRS guidelines, right? All you're doing is complying with what the IRS allows for.
Correct.
And they, yeah, and they set the conditions and the repayment, and then if you don't, if you default on that repayment, then there are penalties.
Correct.
So as long as you stay on the cycle, I got it.
Because then it would be an early withdrawal.
So this isn't perceived as a withdrawal because you're paying it back?
Correct, correct.
I can provide a little continuity, historical context here. I was part of the Board of Selectmen that originally set this plan up and-
1952?
Yeah, it was just after the dinosaurs, but it's clear we had a very paternalistic notion in mind when we set it up, that we thought folks should not be too easily able to borrow against it. Over the past week, I've had a delightful talk with Deb about it, and I think that error of thinking has passed, so I, I support this change. I think it's more in tune with workforce's expectations and current practice. So it was set up deliberately to make it difficult to borrow, and now I think we have to ease the restrictions.
Good, thank you.
We have a vote.
So, yeah, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Number nine, discuss to take action to approve the resignation of Leo Feligno from the Shellfish Commission.
So moved with huge gratitude.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 10, discuss to take action to approve the resignation of Glenn Falk from the Young Women's Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Glenn has been on the Young Women's Commission for something like 20 years.
Wow.
So we really appreciate all his efforts and with regret.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, tax debaters and refunds. I have a huge package here, $12,202,34.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 12, a huge strategic plan document and public comments. Senior packet along with the comments. Lauren, you want to update us?
So, what I gave you in your packet is the current draft, which we have not changed since your public workshop or any of the comments have come in. And then the second document that I gave you is an overview of every single one of those comments that came in via email, which you got sent to you as they came in to me, and then also comments that were received at that public workshop. So this is a comprehensive list of everything, and I've broken them down between comments to the general plan itself and comments to the different pillars directly. And I'm sorry that for some reason, the copy machine did it upside down and I don't, yeah, I don't know why. Me neither. So I apologize for that confusion. So what I wanted to do today, because I know that this is a lot of information to digest, is just for you guys to set maybe a couple of workshops where we'll go through each section of these comments and really work on whether or not, or how, to incorporate them into the draft document. Or if there was anything that you knew right off the bat, you wanted incorporated into the draft document before, you know, before we actually met to review it again.
From my part, a lot of the comments we received were around the tactical implementation of it.
Yeah.
And so most of them are good call-outs and really represent our next steps, not necessarily inclusion in the document. I think, my recommendation is that if we, if we treat the plan as a living document subject to revision with, with new data and not something that collects dust, that we probably are good enough to start moving forward and using this as a guide to our, our strategy and tactics coming up. And I think especially moving into the CIP season, this becomes the test as we evaluate our projects, is it fulfilling some part of the strategic plan? So I think the comments are all well-taken and really start to get addressed more as we move into the execution on our capital spending and our operational spending.
Great. Anybody else?
And I think as we, as we do this, I think we're going to have to start to set priorities because there's a lot, you know, we talked about it, implementation, there are a lot of things that are going to become front and center and others that are going to evolve over time, so I think that's, should be part of the process.
I think that's a really good point. I think we do need to set more priorities.
Yeah, yeah, because it can be over, you look at it, it's overwhelming, and I, and I think that's, you know, I mean, in the workshop, there were a lot of comments, some thought it was, you know, too vague, some thought it was too lofty, but I mean, it really did boil down to, how do you attack this? And it's got to be, you know, we've got to set priorities, obviously.
One thing that's clear coming, looking at these comments is our friends at WPCA have some concerns with us that need to be addressed, so that may need to be a higher priority item. I know that's sort of been sitting out there as one of our items to finish off with Mr. Hanson and crew, so I think we probably need to get that at some point discussed and addressed.
Certainly, it's my expectation that as the CIP moves into its consideration, that they understand that it's, that they're evaluating projects against this document.
Good point.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's great.
Okay, anybody else? Number 13, sense of the comments.
All right, Gus, go for it. That's part of that 34, I'm very circle. On August 30th of the year of the 19, 11:06 in the morning, I filled out an application for the appointment or at least interview for the charter review. And you guys have been very, very busy in the last few months, and there have been no interviews conducted yet for that, and I don't know when it might happen again, but time is running out on the issue. Fortunately, the state statutes allow for two methods of creating a HR review committee. One is an appointment by the Board of Selectmen, and the other one is by petitioning by the voters. And if the Board of Selectmen is going to be tied up by that, I would volunteer to start a petition drive to- to form a charter review committee to help you guys out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gus.
I don't think that's necessary, because I think we're going to get the committee appointed.
Pardon?
I said, I don't think that'll be necessary, because we're going to get the committee appointed. It's just been a matter of trying to coordinate.
You think you want to appoint a committee by the second meeting this month?
Yes.
Okay. If there's anything else I can help out with you, I have about this much background material on the whole issue. So if there's anything I can do to help out, let me know.
Thank you.
A question continued to come up on the charter review, too, whether or not applications are still being accepted, Lauren? Is that, are we still accepting?
Is there somebody who's interested?
Yeah, somebody, well, you know, it was through the Facebook page. So somebody was asking, and I didn't know the answer, so I figured I'd ask.
We will still take applications. I have not gotten any more in, but, yeah, certainly.
Until we start interviewing you guys?
Certainly, I, yeah, I, I think once we start the interview process, then you would cut it off, but up until that point, yeah.
Okay.
Have you guys decided who's going to be the representative?
We have not, so...
So you guys need to do that so we can start interviewing. All right?
Sounds good.
Any other citizen comments? Gus?
I wasn't planning on this, but I want to thank you for having us today. We want to get a picture with you after. But also, my other hat with the American Legion, no matter what the election comes, I just want to let you know that it's like picking a best friend. You've all been so supportive of me as commander and everything. I want to invite you to the Veterans Day ceremony personally at eleven-eleven on the Green, and also on the tenth, the night before, we're having Operation American Soldier Program. So, but I want to thank you for all your support, because you guys have been great to me.
Thanks, Natalie.
I just wanted, concerning the domestic violence issue, October 2nd, I went to what they call the Sander Folk, who's down in New Haven.
Oh, yeah.
And BH Cares, you know, has their center, the Umbrella Center, which I've been to also. And it's very, it's really very impressive what they're doing down there. The center that they have in New Haven. Create, it's such a great place, it's got so many services, and it's so interconnected. It's all, you know, it's one-stop shopping. If you get there, you can have a lot of different things taken care of. And I just wanted to mention tonight, there's a candlelight vigil at the Shelton River Walk from six to seven. Also, Sage Group is doing that. All right. Anybody else, any reports or select comments? No?
Well, I just, I guess I have a question, maybe it's for Lauren. So in our packet, there was this thing that says Scranton Library. Is that something we, were we supposed to discuss this? At least I did. The bottom page says Scranton Library, it says update on library strategic plan.
Oh, that, sorry. You got that because that was something that was given out at that workshop with the library that you weren't able to attend?
Uh-oh.
So it was in your tray. I just put in the back of your, of your packet, anything stragglers in your tray.
Who were supposed to talk?
No, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Here are your other reports, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, everybody.